Gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting the order today for our March 14, 2024 Board Meeting. Welcome everybody here today that's in the courtroom and anybody that's online. Our first item on our agenda today is an indication by Pastor Lee Farmer.
Thank you for the afternoon. This is a prayer on your behalf. Gracious God, thank you for the blessings of being able to be a part of such a wonderful community. We thank you tonight for our Board of Supervisors, and as they conduct our business, we pray, Lord, that you will give them wisdom, guidance, and compassion as they make decisions on our behalf. For it's in your name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Farmer. All right, pledge of allegiance? Let's do it. Would you lead us in pledge and allegiance?
To the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which you stand, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Our next item would be the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Have any, any board member have anything they want to add or take off? Mr. Tadlock? All right, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as it is?
So moved.
Second.
All right, got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next is the approval of minutes. We have five sets of minutes from February 8th. A special meeting, February 8th, a regular meeting, February 9th, a special meeting, February 20th, a special meeting, and February 29th, our joint school board meeting. Are there any additions or deletions to those minutes? And do you want to approve them all as one lump?
Yes.
All right.
I move that we approve all within one lump.
All right.
Second.
I got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next would be our presentations, and our first one would be Taylor Stover from Robinson, Palmer &amp; Cox Associates. Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you as well. Appreciate you having me this evening. My name is Taylor Stover. I'm the partner in charge for your audit for FY '23. The audit went very well in general. More specifically, we issued three opinions inside your report. There's an opinion on the financial statements in whole, there's another opinion on the compliance with internal controls, and there's another opinion on your federal awards compliance. All three of those opinions were unmodified opinions, which is a clean opinion, the best opinion you can get. We did issue a management letter this year. So a management letter is when we have items that don't arise to the level of being a material weakness or a significant deficiency. These are items that we like to communicate with both management and governance, just so they are aware of these issues and can start addressing those. This is actually a repeat finding from last year. We had issues reconciling the school fund expenditures, and that is reconciling from their system over to the treasurer's office, and there was a discrepancy there. So we kind of recommended that that reconciliation be prepared, performed on a monthly basis, so that if there are any errors, they discover ongoing, and they don't accumulate throughout Inside this report, there are two types of accounting presentation. So Exhibits 1 and 2, which are the first two exhibits in there, as well as the proprietary exhibits for the sanitary district area. Those are going to be Exhibit 7 through, yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I got a question on regards to the letter.
Yes, sir.
So pretty much the same letter that went in last year.
Pardon me, sir.
So pretty much it's the same letter that went in last year.
I want to say an item or two were removed, but yes, this comment is essentially the same.
In the year before, but still addressing lack of alignment of the finances. How well did you receive the information this year? Was it received in more of a timely manner this year than it was last year, or was it...
Well, we receive information mostly from the consultant who prepares for the audit. That was delayed this year. We didn't even receive that until December 18th, which was the first day of field work. So it was a little delayed. You have to understand, you are last on her list of clients that she works with for a multitude of reasons. So with that, if she falls behind, it's just going to kind of snowball till it hits you all. And, you know, she does face some difficulties in preparing for that, just because there are multiple systems she's working with.
Okay. Can you follow up with her? I guess my question is, I want to know if it was a delay getting the information like it was last year, is what held the process up?
Good question.
Because we're getting this every year, and every year since I've been on this board, we've had, facing the same issues. And, you know, it's getting to a point that this, whoops, I made a mistake, is, it's not acceptable anymore. I'm sorry. You go ahead with your presentation.
All right. So, okay, so there are two types of accounting presentation in the report. So Exhibits 1 and 2, and then the exhibits that deal with the sanitary district are all going to be on a full accrual basis. So that is going to be how Coca-Cola's books will be prepared, you know, any other like Fortune 500 company. We're going to see all the capital assets, you're going to see the debt liabilities in there as well. Compared to, the rest of the report is going to be compared to what's called modified accrual. And that's going to be more of the fund accounting that you folks use when you're dealing with your budgeting process, where you're going to see the real assets, liabilities, you know, revenues and expenditures for the year. Going through that, you guys ended up, now this is on the accrual basis that I'm talking about now, so the accrual basis, you have 8.5 million of unrestricted net position. That represents 52% of the total net position, and that was an increase of 2.3 million over FY '22. And again, I stress that is with your capital assets, your debt, all your pension and OPEB information in there. So it's not quite as useful as I think the fund accounting exhibits are. So if you're looking, now we go to Exhibits 3, and moving on there, where we go to the fund accounting, you guys have 9.7 million of unassigned fund balance, and that represents 31% of your general fund expenditures for the year. The reason why that's important is the GFOA wants to make sure that you guys have enough in an unassigned fund balance to cover, their magic number is 16.7% of your expenditures. You guys are sitting at 31%, so you're in a great place as far in that regard. The total general fund balance increased about $500,000 over last year to get to that 9.7 million. Your debt service, you guys only have one outstanding bond. You guys made a payment of 1.2 million in FY '23. You still have 23.1 million outstanding on that, and your tax collection percentage for the year was 98.38%. That's when you just factor in current year taxes, when you include delinquent taxes, you're actually over 100% on that. Just kind of funny how the math works there. In ARPA funds, you guys still have 1.35 million in ARPA funds remaining as of June 30th, 2023. And I know you guys have some projects, and those are designated to be spent since they need to be obligated by December 31st. Before I ask you folks if you have any more questions on this, I just want to thank all the staff that helped us get to this point. I want to thank Luttrell, Marion County Administration, and then, without singling out individual staff, everybody at the school board, the treasurer's office, the commissioner's office, and last but not least, social services. So with that, I ask if you folks have any questions on the audit while I'm here, and able to answer those.
All right, and board members have any questions?
We haven't had time to look at it.
Well, that's true. We haven't had time to look at it.
Haven't had time to go over it.
I encourage you, if you do have any questions, please reach out to Luttrell. He'll more than happy to get you in touch with me, and we can discuss any questions you have in detail.
All right, Mr. Stover. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Have a great evening.
You too the same. You have a safe trip back, too. Next item would be a resolution for Community Services Board, and is a name request change. Linda Hodges. How you doing, Ms. Hodges?
Oh, well, how are you this evening?
Pretty good, ma'am.
Good, good. I thank you for this opportunity to present to you tonight. For the newer members of the board, I'm Linda Hodges, and I'm the executive director of the Community Services Board. And I'm here tonight to request your support in the change of our name. Again, we're one of 40 community services boards across the state for the newer members who may not be familiar with our organization. And the area that we serve, there are 10 counties of the middle peninsula and northern neck, equal about the size of the state of Delaware, except we have rivers running through where Delaware does not. And I say that to say, trying to serve as expeditiously as we can to the people who need the services without having, with reducing the cost is challenging at best. My predecessor said that the best place to have an office was like right in the middle of the Ruffahatic River, which we know is not possible. So there's no central areas by point in saying that. Our priority populations are individuals who experience behavioral health disorders. When I say that, I say mental health or substance use, and/or developmental or intellectual disability services. And when I say that, we used to refer to people with intellectual disabilities as mentally retarded, and that's not really reflects what the disability is, it's just more cognitive and memory issues. Our mission is promoting well-being, one individual, one family, one community at a time. So I also want to acknowledge Essex County's representative on our board, Pratt Haney, who represents this county with much distinction. I also want to thank you, and appreciate your support to the Community Services Board in the past many years, actually 50 years. This partnership continues to be, bring evidence-based services to this community. And I say that, it's all based in research. It's not that we come and do what we feel like doing, it's evidence-based. So that, as you may know, as older, more seasoned members of the board may know, the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services in Richmond issues a performance contract every two years, and I come before you and ask you to sign that resolution. And that lays out the responsibilities of the Department of Behavioral Health, of the CSP, and of each county. And as such, you enter a resolution. And that's the reason I'm here tonight, because requesting a name change, we have to have the commitment of each of the 10 counties that we serve. This year, as I mentioned earlier, we're celebrating 50 years of providing services to this wide community, and we are taking the opportunity to make some changes. One is our name change. Two is, we're kind of rebranding ourselves. We are getting a new logo, a new website, and we are going to be attending the local community activities, such as Naffedale Festival in Gloucester, Warsaw Days, I believe, in Richland County. So each county has a unique local event, and we will present ourselves there and re-educate our community members of what services we provide. So in December, our Board of Directors voted to change our name to Behavioral Health instead of Community Services Board. The reason, it's really twofold. Even after 50 years, many people do not know what Community Services Board is. I asked friends of mine, when I say to you, Community Services Board, what do you think of? They don't think of behavioral health services. They do not think of that. Oftentimes, they think of people who are, have been incarcerated and need to do community work in the community, and that is not what we are. Additionally, the term mental illness sadly still has a negative connotation in our society. And behavioral health changes that term, and it seems to be more, more open to people acknowledging, I have a behavioral health issue, rather than I have a mental illness. And so for those are the two reasons that we, I asked the board, and the board did change, agreed to change the name. So I'm here tonight to ask you to consider voting for the resolution, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
All right, any board members have any questions?
Just out of curiosity, have you been to the other counties already?
Actually, I have. Not all counties requested that we be there. I think all, I haven't heard back from Westmoreland. All other eight counties have approved this resolution. Thank you, and thank Mr. Tadlock for having me, putting me on the agenda. I appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Well, you're looking for approval tonight. You said Westmoreland had approved it.
Yes, sir. We would like, I would like approval tonight. We'd like to move forward with, you know, as the season of events in communities begin, we would like to unfold our new name. That's the opportunity we're looking for, and put our new signage out. And certainly, when we have our event in May, May 26th, and you're all invited, you probably have received, hopefully saved the date, we would like to be able to do that. And to do that in a timely manner, we would like you to vote on that tonight.
All right, any other questions? If not, what's the pleasure to board?
I move that we approve the date.
Second.
Second. We got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passed.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, too.
Thank you. I hope to see some of you at 26.
Yes, ma'am. All right, and let's see, what's next here? Next would be the Northern Neck Regional Jail, the MAT program. Amy Dameron.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see you guys. So yes, I'm Amy Dameron. I'm with Northern Neck Regional Jail. I'm Director of Finance Administration at the jail. So tonight, I just want to talk to you briefly about MAT and about the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority Grant. So they call it an OAA grant. Just want to talk to you briefly about what it is, just a brief overview, where we're going, basically, where, what it is, where we're going, and how we're planning to get there. So the Opioid Abatement Authority is an independent body, the purpose of which is to abate and remediate the opioid epidemic in the Commonwealth through financial support, through funding of grants, donations, other ways of financial assistance. But the effort is to treat, prevent, and reduce opioid use disorder and misuse of opioids in the Commonwealth. So basically, how you treat it is through a MAT program. And MAT is a medication-assisted treatment. It's an ADA best practice treatment for opioid use disorder. The MAT program, also, the medications that you receive through a MAT program are FDA-approved medications for the use of opioid use disorder, and is expected of the community and also the jail as part of the community for continuity of care. The need for, this has become a piece where it's becoming mandated and not even a recommendation. It has been a recommendation in the community and within the facilities of the jails to do this, but now it's becoming mandatory. And what we've seen, in April of 2023, just last year, not even quite a year, we started seeing individuals come into the facility on a MAT program. That coupled with the fact that we're seeing more and more information of this being an ADA acceptable treatment, went ahead and pushed us to go ahead and start a MAT program within the facility. So so far in that, we went ahead, we had budgeted already at that time, so we've been able to absorb the individuals coming in from the community on a MAT program. So we've been able to do that financial, bear that through absorption of our current budget. So what we're doing as a jail is we're looking at assistance for expansion, and we're looking at doing the OAA grant, which is a regional grant. This will have no impact to the localities money, so any money that's being distributed to Northumberland County, this will not have any impact on the funding that you will receive. This grant is solely for the expansion. So since we started this within the facility, the idea of us now getting the grant is just for expansion. And what we're looking at is that this has, is very likelihood, we don't know how much it's going to grow, because with money, with funding being distributed through the localities, we don't know how quickly this will grow. So one of the things we're looking at is to apply for this OAA regional grant that will help support the jail. It's a five-year grant. We're not looking for any funding from the counties, from air localities. The jail is going to do the required match. But what we are asking is for you as a, as a county that we serve, to sign the cooperative agreement, so that we can then apply for this grant. And it's a five-year grant, and that way we can continue to apply for it over the next five years as this program expands. Basically, the criteria is that anybody that comes in from your county, we will then be able to provide them this MAT program. Let's see. Jennifer Saunders, I know she's reached out. Jennifer Saunders is the one that's actually writing the grant for us. She's employed by the jail. She's writing it, she's collecting the data. We are going to, as, hopefully, maintain it if we do get approved for the grant. So she's doing that. She's reached out to Drew Basie. I know they've been in contact. Tony McDowell is the point of contact as well with the OAA grant. She's very, sorry, he is very excited about it, because we will be the first regional jail to apply for this grant. They are seeing a need in the facilities, and they're very excited that this is a regional grant that we actually can apply for and that we're doing so. So we feel good about it, but we do need signatures from all the counties that we serve to be able to move forward. And I just want to say that this also speaks to what we do. We serve air localities, you guys being one of them, and we serve at no cost. And what that means is that we are ones that are out there seeking opportunities as mandates of programs, mandates are being pushed down to local government, and a way to find funding. And this is exactly what one of those ways is, is that to help us continue to offset costs that would not have to go, be absorbed, that we absorb it through opportunities like this. So this is just another way that we're able to continue to serve in the manner that we do. So that's, that's it.
All right, any board members have any questions?
So no matter how many inmates we have, this grant would, if the need, need help.
Yeah, yeah. We already, the jail's already going to absorb what we've already done, so like 34 participants at this point through our localities. Anything more than that, this grant will allow us to fund in addition to. So as it grows in the community, we anticipate it's going to grow within our facility. We don't know what that's going to look like yet.
Well, how many years was this grant, how many years is it for? Just one year, two years?
The grant's for five years. So this will give us, and we have to apply each, you know, we apply each year, but it's a five-year grant. So if you get it, as long as you were showing that you were serving and you were doing the requirements of the program, of the grant, you will be able to continue to get, receive the grant. And so over the five-year period, what kind of gets us excited about it, too, is over the five-year period, we'll be able to see, is it going to double? Is it going to triple? What will it actually look like? And then that way, we can, as a jail, can budget accordingly to what it's really going to look like. So five years gives us a good snapshot of that.
Thank you. That's it.
Over the five-year period, how much money you think's going to come in from this grant, a testament?
Right now, it's, and I don't, I don't foresee us using it all, so I feel like it's, we are prepared to pay back what we need to, but it's $200,000 each year.
Each year?
$215,000.
Okay. And after the five years, if, if you don't get the grant, when you renew it after the five years, I understand, you know, you renew every year. And when you do that, once you get it, more than likely, you're going to, you really got to mess up not to get it during the five years.
Right.
But after the five years, if you don't get that grant, what's going to happen to the program and are the counties going to be responsible for any debt?
No, the idea of that is that, what we like about the five years is it gives us the idea, because we don't know how quickly or if it is going to grow.
Okay.
Because there are programs out there now. We started one in 2023, you know, not even a year ago, but it'll give us the idea of how it is going to grow. And if it does, then it just allows the jail more time to figure out how we are internally. Is there another grant that's available? Is there something else internally? And then also, the mandates may change. So as that changes, it allows us to adjust to it.
Okay.
So the idea is not that we're going to pass it on at any time. The idea of it is that this just allows us to see what it really looks like.
Okay.
Is it going to grow, or is it going to stay, you know, is it going to grow the first year or two, and then that's really going to be it? And then we have a clear picture on what we need to budget for internally.
That's all, log in.
Regional jail handles inmates from Northumberland, Richmond, Westmoreland, Essex?
No, not Essex, Gloucester. So Richmond County, Northumberland, Westmoreland, Town of Warsaw, and Gloucester.
And you're, are you still taking inmates from DC and Maryland?
We do have federal inmates, yes.
All right. Any other questions, staff? All right. Pleasure to board. I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second to approve it. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, too. All right, next is a update on the Joint Finance Committee. Dr. Karen Peaker.
Good evening. Is Dr. Blizzard on the line? I know he was ringing in, is he there yet?
Yes, hi, ma'am.
Hi, excellent. So thank you for the time on the agenda today. Both Dr. Blizzard and I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for your foresight in actually putting together the Joint Finance Committee. There have been two formal meetings and a third working group meeting, because our colleagues of the school board were not in attendance at that particular meeting. In those meetings, however, we actually have made some good progress. So the initial intent of the committee was to improve communications and transparency. The communications have been improved, the questions are flying back and forth, there's still some information that's outstanding that needs to be answered. And then another goal was to improve trust in the community, or of the community, and I think that is, is working its way back. So the goals of transparency were to have a budget that was timely and in a line item format. So I'll address the line item format. The school board did submit the budget this year in the county-requested format, and they did submit the expenses in a line item format. There's a little bit of a hiccup, as I'm sure you all are aware, and I think the public may be aware. The expenses were submitted to the Board of Supervisors and approved by the school board on January 8th. It wasn't a real budget, because there were no revenues considered. So it was, however, enough. Dr. Blizzard and I met with the committee on the 29th of January, and we agreed that that was enough to start the questions. So there has been one round of questions, and I think another is forthcoming, about the expenses that were submitted in that budget. On February 29th, at the Joint Board of Supervisor School Board meeting, there was another budget submitted, and the final budget for the school board was submitted on Monday. So one of the objectives that we had as the Joint Finance Committee was to try to get, to expedite the process a little bit, so that the contracts would be signed earlier. A stipulation that was agreed to by both the school board and the Board of Supervisors was that that consideration was contingent upon all the questions being answered. And so I think Dr. Blizzard and I are at a position where we are now holding off on any more Joint Finance Committee meetings. There is one set of questions that was sent to the school board. I believe there's another set of questions that is either being generated or will be sent shortly. I'm uncertain if there will be a third set, because we've had three different documents submitted and two different budgets submitted. And so I think, I appreciate that the board has a lot of work to do to get to those questions. And I think, Mr. Tadlock, because everything that's going on with the rest of the county budget, there might be a little bit of work for you, too. So we look forward, if I can speak for Dr. Blizzard and Linwood, if I misrepresent anything, please just chime in. Both Linwood and I look forward to continuing to work with the Board of Supervisors and the school board. Once the budget, once all the questions are finally answered, a public hearing is scheduled, work sessions are scheduled, all the questions are done, we look forward to the next steps, which are actually the management part of the budget, because both Linwood and I recognize that getting to the budget submission is only one piece of actually managing the resources of the school board in collaboration with the county to instill trust in the citizens. Thank you. Any, any questions?
Questions from the board?
No, I got one comment to make. Mr. Blizzard and yourself have put in a lot of time to try to make things better and make the process flow more evenly. So thank you for your time, both of you. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Linwood, anything I missed?
Dr. Blizzard? The outstanding question was whether, based on this provision that the school board has submitted for Monday's board meeting, providing time for public hearings scheduled for March 20th. Does Tadlock have provided that the board needs to consider that date, based on, just trying to see what that date is pointing to potentially?
So I think, to paraphrase, Linwood, because you were breaking up, but I think really what you're looking for is, originally, there was a target of March 20th. Obviously, that can't happen, there hasn't been notice, plus Monday, March 11th, was the date that the board, the school board approved the revised budget. So I think Linwood's question is, do we have any idea when there might be a public hearing? And not, trying, not trying to get you guys on the spot right now, but we would like to make sure that, from the Joint Finance Committee, we have time to go out and share information with people, but there also needs to be time for you guys to look at the, the information. So I think the open question from Linwood, if I'm, if I'm hearing it, is, when do we anticipate a public hearing? Is that right, Linwood? Is that right, Linwood?
Yes.
I think you said that's correct.
That's what it sounds like. We haven't discussed any of this yet as a board. So we got that on the plate to try to discuss a little bit. I don't know if we'll, how much we'll do tonight or not.
And Linwood and I stand ready to assist as the Joint Finance Committee chairs, co-leaders in any way we can. Thank you.
All right. Thank you again, Dr. Peker. And also thank, thank Dr. Blizzard. He's done a wonderful job also. He's been very helpful on things too. Glad to have him on board. Next is a proclamation, proclamation for Red Cross Month. Mr. Basie?
Yes. Proclamation, know all citizens by these present that whereas Franklin, President Franklin Roosevelt first proclaimed American Red Cross Month in March 1943, and since then, every president has called on Americans to support the organization's humanitarian mission. And whereas the Red Cross has been helping people prevent, prepare for, and respond to emergencies for more than 130 years, and whereas the American Red Cross is celebrating and recognizing the everyday heroes in our community, those who help their neighbors by giving blood, volunteering, and making financial contribution. And whereas the American Red Cross is present in communities across the United States, providing disaster relief, health and safety training, ensuring a stable blood supply for hospital patients and more, none of which would be possible without the support of everyday heroes found in Northumberland County, Virginia, and across the world. Whereas on average, the American Red Cross must collect 12,500 pints of blood every day to meet the needs of patients of approximately 200, 2,500 hospitals and transfusion centers across the country. And while the American Red Cross works tirelessly to be there with help and hope when people need it most without the support of volunteers and the public, the work of the American Red Cross and the Northumberland County chapter would not be possible. And during the month of March, everyone is encouraged to uncover their inner hero and celebrate American Red Cross Month by donating blood, learning a life-saving skill, volunteering, or making a financial donation to the aid and efforts of this humanitarian organization. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of March 2024 as American Red Cross Month in Northumberland County, and urges all citizens to support the programs and services of this local, of the local American Red Cross organization by giving blood through volunteerism, assisting with fundraising efforts, donating to the organization, and by becoming an everyday hero.
All right. Much pleasure to board.
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Have a second?
Got a second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Basie. All right, next is a, is an update from Northumberland County Schools. Dr. Wargo, she's not here today. Anyone else here representing the school system? All right. Anyone online representing the school system? We'll skip over that. All right, up there. Did she say anything to you?
Yeah.
She, she and Tara are both at a training in Richmond.
Yeah.
Longway.
They got training in Richmond. Yeah. She said something about that the other day. I didn't know, it might be somebody else here or not.
Yeah, I thought it'd be somebody else there too.
But they're both in training in Richmond.
I got one question while we're on the school.
Yeah.
I think it was back in August, we were having discussions with the school on reimbursements. And it was reimbursements coming back in a little along, and I remember one figure of three and a half million or four million. Where's that at now? And where's that, where are those funds?
They have been continuing to try and recover those funds. They are the title monies, I think, is what you're referring to.
Yes. And they've, and that's reimbursements, correct? Most, majority of it?
Federal monies, correct.
Okay. So can we find out how much is, has come back to date?
Sure.
And I guess where, where, where's this money at? Where are these funds?
They should be going back to the, the county and to the general fund. So the treasurer's office should have that information as well.
Okay, can we, I guess a better check would be also check the treasurer and see how much, how many of the funds have come back to the county? That's all I got. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything? All right, if not, we'll move on. All right, we have an update from Virginia Department of Transportation. Mr. Beal?
I'd tell you. Yeah, I see, I read it in the paper. I still don't agree with it.
It's a good bridge, Mr. Long. It's all you need enough.
You want to start with the bridge?
Yeah, start on the bridge.
So we have a public meeting for the Norse Bridge replacement. It's March 19th, Lancaster Middle School from 5:00 to 7:00.
Grant page.
What's that?
I read it. I thought about you. I say, I still don't agree though, but you know, it is what it is.
Mr. Long, you might as well face it, your great grandchildren are going to be crossing that bridge.
They, they just done that because you were asking all the time about the bridge.
I want to see you at that meeting.
Huh?
Can you ask all the questions? Everybody will be there. Can you ask all the questions? All right, we've, we've been busy this month. We replaced pipes on Shiloh School Road and Waddy's Road. We cleaned ditches on Honest Point and Walnut Point Road. We cut brush on Lodge Road and Harry Hogan Road, and we've been cleaning storm drains on the primary routes, removing storm debris and addressing county, work orders countywide. We've also completed a pipe outfall replacement on Judith Sound, which is a milestone for us. It's actually the second time we fixed it since I've been here. The river does not cooperate with us, but we fixed that today, so I was happy to get that done. On the upcoming list, a couple of those things are done too. The slope repair on 200 is complete, and we finished the ditch repair on Shiloh School Road today as well. We have a pipe replacement on Lake Road planned, as well as ditch cleaning on Monday Point Hatches, Spring Road, Fountain Gate, Flood Point, Pluff Point, and Light Street. And then we'll keep up with cleaning pipes, patching potholes, and addressing work orders countywide. The pavement schedule I added last month, so I won't go back through that unless you had questions about it. The secondary six-year plan, we talked last month about skipping the update for this year since the county receives less than $100,000. The code allows us to update the plan every other year instead of every year, so there wouldn't be a requirement to hold a public hearing and update that plan this spring. But that is up to the board as to what you want to do. Currently in the plan is the hard surfacing of Addy's Point Road. We call that a rural rustic project where we take an existing state-maintained gravel road and hard surface it. And that estimate is 100, $140,000. The county receives funds in the secondary six-year plans from two sources. One is the tele fees and the other is unpaved road funds. Unpaved road funds can only be used to hard surface existing state-maintained gravel roads. The county, it varies from year to year how much you get depending on how much money's available. That, that amount ranges between $3,000 and $10,000 a year. The tele fees are a little more consistent. It's about a little less than 32, excuse me, $32,000 a year. So as you look on my report where it says Addy's Point Road, summer of '26, that date is because that's how long it takes for the six-year plan to accumulate enough funds for us to be able to go to construction on that project. So given that it's '24, unless the county has a project that they want to add to the plan and are going to support with local funds, there's no money in the, in the plan to add another project until we complete Addy's Point, which would be sometime in, in 2026. So that's why I'm recommending that we skip the update this year unless the county has something they want to add to the plan. The only other thing on here, the structure and bridge project went to add, the scour repair on Bushmole Creek on Route 601. That went to, that went to add in February, and we opened bids on that on the 27th of this month. So hopefully we'll get a responsive bid and can award that project. That's all I have on my report is just if you all let me know what you want to do with the secondary six-year plan update, if you want to wait till spring of '25 to hold that public hearing, or if you want to do it in May of this year.
All right, much pleasure, board, on the six-year plan.
We got it updated. Any other?
We got a, not a whole lot of money difference, so you want to have the public hearing or you want to hold off till next year?
Let's, let's have a public hearing.
Is that what the board wants to? Is that what the board wants to do, is have a public hearing?
I'm fine.
All right. Guess we'll have a public hearing, Mr. Beal. You need to set a date for it today or?
Yes, sir. We could do it at our next, at our April meeting if that, does that work for?
Is that right with the board?
Our review, Mr. Beal?
Typically we've had a work session the month before, and then we hold a public hearing, but honestly, we could do it all in one, we could do it all in April, we could do it all in May, whatever you all want to do.
Why don't we just do it all one night, get it all done? That way, say, Mr. Beal, have him come back.
He don't mind.
Because he's going to hit with the bridge each time.
Well, I was going to hit him with Kishner Springs Road, but that's, that's another need to keep.
Yeah. All right. We'll, Jim, you want to make your motion for next month?
Yes. I move that we have a public hearing next month.
All right. What's the date, Mr. Tadlock?
It's April 11th.
April 11th.
April 11th.
All right.
At 6:00 PM? Is that right?
We, we do all of our public hearings at 7:00.
7:00.
7:00. Okay, 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM. So we have a, a public hearing on a six-year plan at 7:00 PM on April the?
11th.
11th.
April 11th. Right.
All right, do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, we got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Beal, we'll see you next month.
I've got a couple items for you, if you don't mind. Edgewater Drive and Ferry Road and Hacksneck, you got a sign that's down there. The intersection of Fleaton and 360, there are a couple signs that have, they haven't blown over, but they're, they're not upright.
Fleaton and where?
And 360. And I've had a couple people that live on Sutton Avenue in Reedville that have approached me about coming on to Fleaton Road from Sutton. When they look to their right, their visibility is blocked by a couple of large trees, and they're really are taking a chance coming out right there. If you could just have somebody check into that, I'd appreciate it.
Will do.
That's it.
The water that stands on Light Street, what can we do about? Do they need pipes or what?
You know, specifically the location you're talking about, I don't know, but typically we have outfall ditches that run perpendicular to the road, and those clog up, and we don't have easements, and property owners don't maintain them, so there's nowhere for the water to go. But if you have a specific location, I can look at it, and we can do our best to try to see if we can get it to drain. But in these, in these flat areas, if your stick falls in the ditch, water's going back up. I don't know. If you have a specific address or area you want me to check into, I'll, I'll look into it.
You know, that, that's the, that's real bad down in there when it rains. Check what I can do.
Would you want to meet with me? Maybe we could ride and look at it?
Okay, that'd be good.
Okay.
What's the best number for you?
I'll coordinate through Mr. Tadlock.
Okay.
We can do it then.
Anything else?
Oh, that's it.
Hi, Mr. Brad.
Has VDOT scheduled the public hearings regarding the lane changes for Calle Hill and Lottsburg yet?
No, I expect we'll announce a date sometime after the Norse Bridge meeting.
After the Norse Bridge meeting? Okay.
Yeah. That's next week, so our communications team has been busy preparing for that.
All right, is that all?
Yes, sir. Got several complaints. I understand you did some work down at Shiloh School Road on culverts. A couple complaints from the Balls Neck area and Shiloh School Road regarding water. And I know we've had, what, eight, seven, eight inches of rain in two weeks, and it's going to be standing. But I told the individuals that I would let you know about it. I see we did some ditch cleaning in, in Bluff Point. Appreciate that, because that was part of the area also. But I guess leaves and sticks and everything else, and with the tremendous high water we've been having with rain for the last 30 days. But I would like to mention to you that if you get a chance while you're out, maybe you could look at these areas and see what you think. At any rate, I told them that I would speak to you and put it on record that I did.
The first location you said was Shiloh School Road and where?
And Balls Neck.
I will review it.
Got it. And also, if you put on your list, the beavers on Night's Run are steady building.
Got it. Thank you.
Is that all, Mr. Fisher?
That's all, sir.
Thank you for getting COVID across Clarktown Road. I've heard a lot of good, good things about that. They were happy to see that.
I asked Mr. Van Landenham when he said he was replacing the covert on Clarktown, and I said, is that the one Mr. Heaney always asked me about?
Yeah, I keep getting, I keep, people keep telling me about it.
Yeah, get that replaced.
Yeah, those, those, those two potholes, I kept hearing about those two potholes all the time.
I understand.
So thank you very much for getting that. And I, I don't have anything else right now, but.
Okay.
And thank you for coming.
All right, thank you all.
All right. Next is the county administrator's report. Mr. Tadlock?
Yes, sir. For the month of February, we had four new structures. Total construction cost for the month is $3.2 million. Total construction cost year-to-date is $7.6 million, which puts us below, this time last year, roughly about $3.3 million.
Hmm, bunch.
Next item I have is we have a reappointment for Ed King Planning Commission District One.
I moved that we reappoint Mr. King.
I got a motion to have second?
Second.
Motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 And I believe Mr. Fisher has a planning commission member to appoint, and Mr. Williams has a wetlands board member to appoint.
Which one, you want to go first?
It doesn't matter.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yes. District Four, Northumberland County Planning Commission, I'd like to nominate Mr. Alan Garland. Mr. Garland is a native of Northumberland County, a graduate of Northumberland County High School. I've known Mr. Garland since he enrolled with the Northumberland County Sheriff's Office some 16, 17 years ago. I was his field training officer. He's a very, very smart individual. He's a major at the sheriff's department now. He's worked his way up, and he's also very active in the Little League program. And I am just tickled pink that we could get him. I think he'll be a great asset to the Northumberland County Planning Commission.
All right. Got a motion to have second?
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to nominate Spencer Hedley to the wetlands board from District Five. He's also a lifelong resident of the county, and he's a commercial waterman, so his, his knowledge of. knowledge of, in that area would be a big benefit to that board. And I'm glad he accepted my offer and that's my nomination.
All right, we have a motion?
I'll second it.
Excuse me, I got a motion to second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will welcome those two people on board.
Next item I have is an anti-litter committee, District Four, reappointment and Mary Martha Stewart is, needs to be reappointed.
She's Willand Saravich. All right, motion to approve. I need a second.
I give a second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And also thank him, Mr. Tadlock.
Yes, sir. Next item I have is supplemental appropriation to 3102-1006 in the amount of $770 for the ballgames worked by the deputies.
This is just in and out money?
It's, it's reimbursement from the school division to the county.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item is the, the board had requested that the planning commission review the usage table for the zoning ordinance and they are making a recommendation that the conditional use permit be required for any office buildings proposed in the R1 residential, general or residential waterfront, R2 zoning districts. In order to make that change, the planning commission would need to hold a public hearing on it and then send that recommendation to the board of supervisors.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move that the planning commission go ahead and have their public hearing.
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item I have is the fiscal year '25 health insurance rates. We did see a 7.2% increase this year on our health insurance rates. If the, the board decides to keep the county employees whole, meaning no additional cost to the, the county employees, the county would be looking at a, an approximately $105,000 increase.
And that's for which plan now?
That includes all of the current plans that we offer, which are the Key Advantage 250, the 1000, and the high deductible plan.
All right, how's the board feel about it, any discussion on it?
What's that, Rich?
How's the board feel, any discussion?
I, I, I think we should keep them.
That is one benefit that, and I know it's expensive, but that is one benefit that if any county in the northern that kind of slips on, you're going to lose some staff.
Right.
And.
Yes.
It, I think, like I said, it's.
Right, you're right.
I, I think we need to try to keep it the way it is.
Keep it, right.
I agree with you on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we need to keep that for our employees.
What the motion?
All right, we have, I'll accept the motion.
Yeah, I move that we keep the, the same plan for our employees.
Okay, have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion to second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you go, Mr. Tadlock.
All right, next item I have is the discussion on the Little League roof or the concession stand roof, the request to help offset any costs there. We'd sent the letter and I did hear back from Dr. Worgo, she was asking for some additional information, but I think Mr. Williams has some additional information he would like to provide to the board as well.
What I have is that we originally talked about splitting up the cost of a shingled roof over the concession stand boardroom and restrooms there. The cost of that shingled roof was $11,500. The Little League has decided that they did not want to do the shingled roof, they wanted to go with the metal roof. And you have in front of you a quote from SNL Home Improvement out of Montross. As you see, the total for labor materials on that job was $24,500. They needed to pay 50% of that money upfront, which they've already done, and they have the remaining balance of $12,250. They did this with the understanding that we were still going to give them one-third of the shingled roof cost. Schools, ball season has already started, it started Tuesday night, they had a home game there, they have a home game there tonight, that bathroom, the women's bathroom is being used, that's where the trouble is with, with leaks, they have water on the floor in the event that it rains. I'd like to see us get them this money so they can take care of paying this off upon the completion of the job. Their opening day for Little League is March the, March the 30th and their, the contractor guaranteed them or promised them that he would have these repairs done by the time of their opening day. I'd like to see us go ahead and give them one-third of the $11,500, which comes to $3,800, $3,833.33.
Didn't they have to lock those buildings up during a couple of games because of the water on the floor from rain, they were afraid somebody, as a matter of fact, somebody did slip, I think.
I think somebody slipped, I'm not sure games were going on.
They had to lock the buildings up and that was locked up and they sent notice to the school that, that it was locked up temporarily until that water situation could be cleaned up or whatever.
We've had discussions in the past regarding other buildings, leaky roofs. Not only, it, it, the roof is bad, but if you keep letting it go, it's going to damage other parts of the building, you got liability, someone's already slipped. So I, I think something needs to happen here. I have a hard time understanding the, the arrangement that the Little League has with the schools anyhow. And I guess my issue is, years ago, Northumberland County had, the Little League had ball fields. There was a lot of donations, a lot of money from the community went into those ball fields. And they knew one day that a school was going to be built on their property. And I guess the point I'm trying to make is, I have a hard time for the Little League having to cut grass and, and pay repairs, repairs on these buildings when they already built a Little League field one time in this county in a concession stand and it all got torn down to build a school. This is a good program, it's a good program to start kids off young and playing sports. It's a whole lot better having them at their, playing sports and sitting home playing video games.
Amen.
Agree with you 100% on that.
I will, I will, if that was a motion, I'll second that motion.
Mr. Tadlock, is the school board aware of these figures?
They.
Or are they aware of the shingle figures?
I did not provide them any type, I didn't have any figures to provide them, I just asked the question in my letter to them if they would be willing to split the cost with the Little League County and, and the school.
Thirds.
In thirds, and, and that letter went to the Little League and the school division.
And, and you haven't heard back from the school or?
Only from Dr. Worgo yesterday, asking for some additional information, which I provided to her today.
Okay, okay.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, what, what we could do is go ahead and give the money that's needed. And then if the school board agree, they can give us half of what we put in, just a little weight. This is something probably need, need to be done as soon as possible, right?
I know they had the, the money obviously to, to put the 50% up, up front, but I, I'm not sure how they stand financially.
Well, that's my motion.
So you are saying make, your motion is to give them the other half that's needed and then we'll get the money back from the school system?
That's right.
That would be actually deal the third, right?
Yeah.
And in the event that we don't get the money back from the school, if they decide not to give it to us, then where are we?
I think they'd be more apt to do it if.
I don't see why they wouldn't, you know, I don't see why they wouldn't.
If we put them on the spot, you know, if, if the Little League puts up a third and we put a third, they're going to look pretty bad not putting up their third.
I mean, it's helping the kids and that's what it's all about.
That's what it's all about.
Right, so I'm sure that they would do it.
They, they use it just as much too.
They do.
And it's, it's in their interest to do it.
If they don't do it, Mr. Long take care of it.
Right, yeah.
Now, Mr. Long, we, we did hear, we did just hear that you agreed to take care of it.
That's right.
All right, so that's your motion, Mr. Long.
That's my motion.
All right, do I have a second to it?
Second.
All right, got a motion to second, any other discussion?
Mr. Mr. Haney, so this would be a supplemental appropriation to 5302-5621 Northumberland Little League and this would just be a one-time payment.
Yeah, just, just one time.
And just for clarification, what, what amount are we?
Yeah.
We, we discussed half, but I want, I want to have a dollar.
What is the amount?
Well, it's in thirds.
Well, two-thirds of that $11,500, if that's the amount we're, we're basing this off of, would be $7,666.66.
$7,666.66.
766.67.
And the school board would be responsible for half of that, hopefully.
Half of that, which would be 38, 33, 33.
Mr. Long, is that all right for you, to amend your motion for that?
Right, sounds good.
Your motion is to approve $7,666.67 to go toward the Little League roof.
Sounds good.
All right, and second's okay. All right, any other discussion? Everything all right for you, Mr. Tadlock?
Yes, sir.
All right, any other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, all right. Next item.
That's all I have.
Whenever you're ready, I'm not trying to push you.
No, that's all I have.
All right, next item is the board of supervisors' items. We have approval of a check register and I hope everyone's had a chance to review the check register. Any questions, comments, whatever on the check register?
I got some comments.
All right, let's hear your comments, sir.
You might not like my comments, but I got comments. Let me pull this up. Mary, still here? Mary, I'm not fussing the boat, you said don't throw nothing at me, okay? All right.
Let me get it away.
No, Mary sends out a expense summary every month. And I've questioned this in the past and I'm going to question it again tonight. I have a hard time sitting up here and questioning the school budget when we have line items in our own budget that are being run in the negative. I don't like that, I think the, the line items need to be balanced out and if I'm mistaken, I thought that we voted on and approved a budget transfer form to be able to take care of this. And, you know, we can't sit up here and, and keep talking about the school budget and we have some of these same issues in our budget. And I don't know what, what needs to be done, but I think we need to get department heads to, to balance out their line items using the county policy and form that, that we, that we approved.
Yes, I'm in.
Now, with that being said, I'll move on down to the school section of this. Again, I have a hard time voting on and approving a check register when we got line items under the school. And some of it's federal cares, ACT money and debt fund and all of this, but, you know, obviously federal cares, you know, that's showing a negative of $970,000. That's, that's showing expenditures year-to-date, but if you go to the left, there's no appropriations. And I have a hard time accepting that. If it was $970,000 to spend, why is there not an appropriation on that side? And I may be looking at this wrong and I may need to be educated on it so I can understand it a little better.
Yeah, I think that's the expenditure report.
Yes.
And what the, the board would be taking action on is the check register itself.
Right.
So the check register is, is separate from the expenditure report.
Okay, but are some of those checks written out of those line items that are being run in the negative?
They, they are, are being written out of the expenditure, yes, they, they would show up in the expenditure report.
I just think that.
And that, that form has just been sent out, so it's going to take a little bit of time for these departments to know, like I said, we just sent that out, so for them to get that information back to us, look at their budgets and provide us that information back.
How about, you know, under the school section and I, and I know we, the county can only do what information that we get. But even at that, and, and if someone from the public pulls this thing and they look at this and they say, okay, that's, that's $970,000 negative, and they look all the way over for appropriations, appropriations and it's nothing there. Yes, ma'am.
Are you looking into the bank fund? Because there's two funds that show for the school. There's a Fund 10 category and then there's a Fund 30. Appropriations are in the Fund 30.
Okay. Can you come take a look at what I'm looking at? Because you may be able to help, help me get squared away. I'm looking at this section.
All right, see, this is all the appropriations.
So what I'm looking at, you see the 970? And you got over here, you got $0 appropriated for that.
Right, and so that's where the treasurer's office, when they get the information back from the school, from their monthly reports where they bring in the expenditure stuff, they, Gail actually keys that to the system.
Okay.
They don't have any control over our reporting, our system, because we're separate. So if you're seeing a negative, something from the treasurer's office may have not been keyed over yet because of a reconciliation coming back from the school.
Okay, so I guess to help me a little bit more, from what I've seen, nothing has ever been put in it, in those categories all year long, like here, like you said, it's got to come back from the treasurer's office.
Well, here, you're not going to, this is where expenditures year-to-date, this is what's being keyed, this is what was given to them, is that Fund 30? It's hard, can I turn it?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, so that's the total and then that's the balance.
Right.
So the federal cares, if they haven't asked for an appropriation for it, then it's not going to be there.
Okay, and I guess that leads to another question, and thank you for helping clear that up. It hasn't been given to them, how can they spend it? And that's not a question for you, I'm not trying to put you, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. But that's, that's my question, if it, if it hadn't have been appropriated, how can you spend it? And I guess to me, and the way I'm looking at it is, it, it just throws it off, the numbers don't add up, it's, it's money being, going out and it shows no money there to go at. How can we clean that up?
See, some of those monies have to be done on a reimbursement basis. So in order for them to even get those funds back or request it, they have to show that the, that project has, has been completed.
Okay, so we already had a discussion that some of these funds, it's already come back into the county, correct? Then we should not have a zero balance in those line items. It should show that money coming. It should show that money coming back into the county.
Yeah.
If I'm looking at it right.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, but I think some of that is, is timing, too. Because if, if you have that grant and you're waiting for those monies to, to come back in, to help offset that, that cost.
Right. I'm, I'm already, I follow you on that, but my point is, we've already received money for this year.
If they're on a reimbursement basis, and what they're requesting- We do not do that supplemental appropriation for that. So we reject those costs.
Okay.
And a lot of them is on a reimbursement basis. That's to ensure that department will-
Okay.
So it's, it's to ensure that they will ask for that reimbursement and sort of get all of that.
Okay. I understand all that, but we still, even with that process, we still shouldn't have zero balance in some of those line items. We, it should show some numbers.
We, we can take a look at that, yeah.
And I don't mean to throw a kink into this thing tonight, but I, it's, it's just something I've been looking at, and it, and to me, if, if I was setting it in the public and I got this report and, and I started looking at it, and I'm like, you know, that's money being spent, no, nothing appropriated for that line item.
Yeah, no, we, we can take a further look at that.
Yeah, okay.
Mike, any other comments? Any other comments from the board members? What's the pleasure of board on check register? Approve it or not approve it?
Doesn't have an impact on payment. We're also about that.
It, it does. That, that's what the board has proven, is the check register to send out the payments.
Does it have an impact?
I tell you what, I will make this motion. I'll move that we approve this one this month, but I want to see the corrections done next month. I won't vote for another one like this.
Okay, second. Alright, we got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Alright. Next item on the agenda is board comments. We'll start, alright, we'll start, start with you, Mr. Fisher. Put you on the spot first.
Yes. I want to thank the joint, publicly thank the Joint Committee on School Board, and School Board Public and Board of Supervisors for the work that they have been doing and have brought forth. Look forward to working with them and helping them get whatever information they can, and I just want to say publicly, thank you for helping us. Okay? Lynn? Both of y'all. That's really all I got.
Mr. Brand?
Um, the rehab unit that's sitting over at the shop across the street, I've asked to do this three or four times. If it can't be fixed, it needs to be moved and not sitting it in the middle of a bunch of cars that's all pulled apart. I, I keep getting complaints on it, and the last one I got was, I still see it sitting over there, you're not, you're not gonna do anything about it anyhow, somebody's gonna stop asking about it. You know, if you can't fix it, then put it somewhere where the public can't see it.
I've asked for that to be, to be moved, so.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
To be moved means what? It's gonna be fixed? Jumped?
Well, they, they are trying to, one, either get it started long enough to get it back over into the impound lot, and I've asked for that to be checked on to make sure there's room in the impound lot. If they can't get it started, they were gonna tow it across to get it off the lot over there, to the impound lot.
Um, department head reports, I'm gonna use social services for an example. Is it any way that we can consolidate all of their attachments, and when we click on a report from social services, that everything will come up, social services, and not have to click on three or four or five different items?
We can look into that, yes, I think they can be compiled.
And can we have a formatted way of identifying their file when they submit it to board docs? Like DSS and have the date that it's for the meeting. Some of them are just left, it's just hard to follow.
Sure.
But it's, but I'm gonna tell you, I, I really appreciate all the department heads for doing their reports. It's a lot of good information in it, and it's, they really, our staff does a lot of work, and a lot of hard work. And a lot of people don't realize what they do, but those reports help a lot in, in informing me, giving me information on what they get done. And it would be nice to get a, a report from the Commissioner of Revenue. That would be greatly appreciated. And, uh, IT, Robert. You sent in an email a while back, county staff, you pretty much were requesting that if they needed any work to be done, that they needed to fill out the work orders. Thank you. County paid a lot of money for that software to, to track the work orders and, and the work that all the departments head doing in county, and thank you for putting that out there. They need to submit the work orders to, to you or whoever else that they need to, to Curtis or whoever, so we can keep all of this information and use it for the future, and thank you for doing that. Yes. And the last thing I got is a comprehensive plan. When do we review that again?
What's that, Jim?
The comprehensive plan.
You did it two years ago.
That's before the planning commission right now.
Okay.
It has to be redone every five years.
Every five? Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Long?
Yes. First, the, well, some county signs, there's leaning, almost falling down, especially down the Evansville area. So we need, we need to take care of those, so let Curtis know, and I'm sure other places around the county. Because if these things fall in the road, which would, one happened last year, and at dark, people don't see them, it can damage their cars, or even cause, uh, cause other injuries. Their ordinance, criminal background. We need, where are we on that?
I know the sheriff's office is waiting for the, a response from the FBI, and that's kind of the-
That's been going on quite a while, though.
It, it has. But that's, that's kind of where we're, we're stuck.
We sure don't wanna hide anybody, and they come in here and, uh, really do serious things, you know? So, we really need to move on that. That's very important. Right? And the other thing, uh, the housing assessment grant has been approved. You know, so all this thing, we're waiting on that as a meeting.
We're, we're waiting on the kickoff meeting, and I know Jerry Davis has reached out to the state to try and get that coordinated. We had it, we had it scheduled initially, and then the state had to reschedule, but we've not gotten another date yet from the state.
Okay, and the last thing, uh, various trucks is hauling limbs and all this, you know, don't require them to cover that. You know, the reason I'm saying that, those things are falling off. And if limbs fall off at night, because it happened to me, I came around a curve limb in the road, I ran over it, it tore my lights out in front, before I could see it.
It needs to be at least secured, it doesn't have to be covered, but it needs to be secured. If it can blow off, it needs to be covered.
What was that, Mr. Fisher?
If it's anything, on my understanding, in the past, if anything can blow off, it needs to be covered. But something, as far as tree limbs, they need to be at least secured, so nothing does come off.
Okay.
That's, that's-
So we need to make that, uh, made to get, need to get that out to the public, because those things are dangerous. When you're coming around a curve and you don't see it, a sign or anything, you know, it could cause damage to a person's vehicle, it could cause damage to life, you know? Person lose control. So we need to make sure those, the public understand those things, and where we can look out for each other. Alright? That's all I have.
Mr. Williams?
Simply to tag along to Mr. Fisher's comments, thank you to the EDC for emails, text messages. We hear you, we appreciate your hard work. We might not always agree with everything you send us, but we're listening, and we appreciate what you're doing for us. And also a thanks to the EDC, they're meeting with some local wardmen on Tuesday night, and to pick the brains of those guys, to see, to see what they do, and to possibly see how they could assist in, in, in them, their, their, their money. How they, how their businesses could be better than this county, how the county could better support local wardmen. And that hits home with me, because I'm in that field and appreciate it.
And thank you for the website you've put out, that's fantastic.
Alright, Tedlock? First thing I'd like to thank staff for all the hard work they're doing. Public doesn't really know how much work staff does behind the scenes, they only see a little bit here in the meetings. A lot behind the scenes. Also, the board members, thank y'all. Because we've all have probably heard it, that we don't do anything except one day a week, on one day a month. It's a lot of meetings, we have a lot of phone calls, a lot of information to read, so thank all the board members for that. One thing I would like to see, we have the software now for all of our maintenance work orders and everything. We'd like to see a report on that, on all the HVAC equipment in the buildings. And, uh, Mr. Basie, I think you can take care of that, so we can see where we are with it, uh, because summer's coming up, and if we, if we have any equipment that's starting to give us a lot of trouble, we need to, need to review that, see what we're gonna do with it. Don't want it breaking down when it's 95 degrees. Yeah. So if you can just, just put all the reports together, or just give us access to it. Yeah, you got monthly reports, but if, if you can just kind of put it together a little bit more, please, for just, just what we've done in this current year. That's all I have. Next would be public comments. Morgan, you'd be so kind to get your sheet, please?
After that, we call it out.
You want a break?
Break.
Uh, well, I was already thinking about that.
After a couple comments, you're gonna eat a drink.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright, I guess that was Lynn's do it, but did you scratch through it?
I scratched through it.
Alright. Next one, Dr. Peker.
So I rise tonight as a private citizen, I am not here in my role as a joint finance committee. The website that Mr. Fisher referenced is ncsb.org, a group of citizens in the county have gotten together and stood up a website called North, Northumberland County School Board Watch, because there are a lot of questions around the finances. Everything I'm about to state is fact, I have the numbers to back it up, I sent an email this afternoon with some of those numbers. I'm more than happy to give you oodles and oodles of spreadsheets, and oodles and oodles of data that have been collected from the State Department of Education site, analysis of the school board expense reports, analysis of county audits going back to 2019, and analysis of the check registered of the school and their school budgets, all of them that have been submitted. So I rise in concern still, I've been working on this now for about nine months, there is no single source of truth for what is county, for what is revenue for the school system and what is expenditures. If you look at the Department of Education, last year, I think that, it says there's $10 million that came into this county from state and federal sources. If you look at the school budget, it shows 5.6, I think. If you look at the audit report, I'm not sure what it says. I am very eager to read the audit report that the gentleman earlier briefed on, because based on what the audit report is supposed to say, it's a financial statement that presents fairly the financial position of the county. That is from the cover of the audit. Unless that audit report shows a deficit in school spending in five of six categories, the auditor was not given the correct reports. On December 5th, 2023, the school board reviewed financial expenditures for the year that closed June 30th, 2023. If you look at that expenditure report, which is pulled from the school accounting system, RDA, you will find that the school overspent in five of six categories. The answers that they provided you when you asked questions, the first set of questions that went over on the county budget, the very first question, they admitted that they overspent in all but the instruction category. I'm not an attorney, however, there is a part of Virginia code that does say you can't overspend unless you go to your appropriating body. In that answer, the school admitted that they did not know they overspent until November of 2023. I can find no record of the school board coming to the board of supervisors and saying, "We overspent." Where did the school find almost $800,000 last year? If you look at the audit reports going back to 2019, am I talking too fast? I tend to do that, I get excited. If you go to the audit reports from 2019, from 2019 to 2022, the audit reports identify that there was a surplus in the school system. Where is that money? Mr. Brand, you're correct. That money that should have been returned ranges anywhere from 3.1 million to $7 million, depending on which figures you look at. So if the audit reports are accurate, then there should have been $3 to $7 million that was returned to the school. If, however, the audit reports are based on expenditure reports from the school that are not yet final, then we've got a different problem. So the auditors start their report in July or August at some point. If the schools don't finish their books until November, what month are those reports being run and given to the auditor? The school may tell you it's because they're awaiting federal reimbursement. Now, the federal government closes September 30th. The school knows exactly how much money they're requesting in reimbursement, they actually have, at every school board meeting, a chart that shows how much money they're requesting in reimbursement. If you know that you have $800,000 that you're gonna get reimbursement, you don't spend a million. You spend less than $800,000. So we have a serious problem with how the books are being kept. Look at what happened this year. Two different budgets had to be submitted. I would really like to know, the first budget on February 29th, and the second budget on March 11th, there was only a $2,000 difference in the expenses. The revised budget only included 2,000 more expenses. It included over 1.2 million reduction in revenue. Why was the first budget so high? By the way, the budget that was submitted Monday included revisions, not only to 2024 figures, it included revisions to 2023 figures. A fiscal year which closed June 30th, 2023. You cannot go back and change your request that far. Oh, and by the way, if the 2024 budget was remanded, do you all have to do another budget amendment? How much money was the county due to the school in the 2024 cycle? And since the school revised their budget request for 2024, do you now have to revise your appropriation? I reviewed that budget appropriation document from last year, and it's very explicit about what goes where. How does that change based on what's now in place? Mr. Brand, to your point about zero appropriations, I can give you the spreadsheet, because the school gave me the spreadsheet. I asked for a spreadsheet version of it rather than the PDF, because I really got tired at 3:00 in the morning of transposing numbers. I asked for the spreadsheet. There are many, many line items, I can give you all the numbers of those line items where there is zero appropriations and lots of expenditures. Some of those are in the questions that were asked in your first round, and every single time that was asked, the school said, "We have to do a journal entry, we have to do a journal entry." We have to do a journal entry." How many journal entries are required? And if those, once those journal entries are all complete, does that change the baseline for expenditures? We all know that the school does incremental budgeting, which means they just take last year's expenses and bump it up a little bit. Well, if last year's expenses are wrong, does that mean this year's estimate is also wrong? And Mr. Long, I totally appreciate the fact that we need to focus on the kids. I'm here today to do that. We have had a 36% decrease in proficiency scores in the last five years in English and math. That means our students have had a 36% decrease in how well they can read and do math. And that's in one category. Another category is 8%. Across the board, the students in this county are having a harder time learning the basics. We've had an 11% decrease in the number of students. We've had a 43% increase in the non-instructional positions in the school. And I would like to know, when we'll see accountability? Mr. Brand, you asked that, I think, in December. When we'll see accountability? I think there's actions that the school could take. I'm really eager to read this audit, because my understanding was that the auditor, what were the words he used? Clean. How can you have a clean audit when you have $800,000 in overspending that's not allowed by the state code? Now, if all the auditor is looking at is to make sure that the books, the documents are correct, if the school documents show a deficit and the auditor says that that deficit is correct, then you're right. The audit would be, the documents are correct, right? Because they correctly recorded their deficit. When is the audit going to be posted? Anybody know? Pardon me? Oh, lovely, I have homework tonight. So, um, oh, no. Because I, I really don't understand how the school can just spend and then give you the bill. I, I am not here, I spoke in front of the school board meeting on Monday and I said the same thing. I don't understand how they're not looking at their checkbooks, how they're not asking any questions, and how they continue, they're making policies. They just passed a policy on Monday that requires more funding from the county. If I'm not mistaken, that's basically a tax policy. And I don't think the school board has the authority to do that. They're giving a 3.5% raise to the, to the employees. Kudos to them. You're going to take that away because there's going to need to be a 10% increase in taxes in order to pay for the school budget. So really, you're getting a 7% reduction in, in your take-home pay. And that's for everybody in this county. Some of us are on fixed incomes, some people are working their tails off at two jobs to make ends meet. And if you read the school board responses, one of their answers was, "We need this money to buy flowers and gifts for the school board." I appreciate that the school board does a really hard job. I'd appreciate more if the students could learn rather than the school board get flowers and gifts.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else on the sign-up sheet, but would anyone else like to speak tonight? Anyone else like to speak? Come on up, ma'am. Changed their mind now.
I do.
I would like to thank the board of supervisors for doing the forensic audit. Karen pointed out many issues that we have seen for years. Karen and Maurice are both very smart individuals that are able to connect the dots. And they've connected them in a way that you all have listened to. And as a citizen, I really appreciate that. The bottom line is, the joint finance committee, the board of supervisors, and to a large extent, the school board as well, um, have all cooperated to get to this point. And now we're at the point where some really hard questions will be asked and some really truthful answers need to occur. It's like the old game show, and we have to keep our eye on the prize. We need truth, and then we need consequences for those actions that are not being truthful. We all have a job to do in the county. It's a community effort to make sure that these dollars are being spent appropriately and to the greatest advantage of the students. Not the unions, not the pension funds, not the playground. I appreciate the kids need fresh air, but there's a lot of grass over there. We need to focus on education. And whatever cuts are made or needed to the school board budget, need to highlight the fact that the teachers and the parapros come first, because they're our first line to teach our students. Again, I appreciate everything that everyone in this room is doing to bring this to a head so that we finally get the real answers and true numbers. Because without those true numbers, like I said a couple of years ago, we're throwing money into a big, dark, black hole. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, would anyone else like to speak? All right, anyone in the virtual world like to speak tonight? Anyone in the virtual world like to speak tonight, like to make a public comment? All right, since we don't have anyone else to speak, I'm going to close the public comment period. And we're going to take a 10-minute recess before we have our public hearings tonight. Sounds good. All right, we'll be back in about 10 minutes. Let's see, we have some new faces that just come in. Welcome y'all here tonight. Uh, we have one item on the agenda we need to change. Our next item would be to convene in a closed meeting, and we're going to switch that around to the end of our public hearings, so we can go ahead and get our public hearings taken care of, if that's all right with the board. All right? Our first request is a request by Stephen Tillman. Phil, would you take care of that, please?
Yes, sir. We have a request by Stephen Tillman, owner, for a conditional use permit to allow two cargo containers for storage on property zone A1 agricultural. The property is shown as tax map parcel 18-1-25 and is located on Newman's Neck Road.
Mr. Tillman? Come on upstairs, please. Just kind of tell us what you would like to do, sir.
Uh, just apologize for my dress attire.
You, you all right, don't worry about that.
Uh, I'm trying to put two shipping containers in for storage for my tools, for my business, and for storage on my property. I run a lawn and tree service company and hauling company. And I'm building a brand-new home on the property, and I'm coming from a place that had a decent-sized garage to store my stuff in. And I want something to store everything until I get the funds income enough to put another garage in. And it would be for roughly three to five years. And then I am trying, when I go to do it, I'm going to put it on block so that air can flow underneath, so that it keeps them from rusting. I've already painted them dark green, so that they blend in with any of the woods. And they're, uh, 325 feet off the roadway, behind some trees, so that you can't see them from the roadway when you're going down the road as it is. I've, uh, I've, I've graded the land, so they're nice and level and flat. And, uh, sit there, I'm going to put stone underneath of them, keep them upkept, and keep them painted and, and nice-looking for the perspective future. Currently, I'm storing any of my equipment, basically in the back of my truck, because I'm living in a temporary living situation until the house is done and complete. And I'm just trying to seek shelter for my tools and equipment and stuff like that.
Okay. All right, any board members have any comments or questions from Stillman?
I do, uh, I went down there and looked at it. Matter of fact, I took some pictures if any of the board members would like, would like to look at them. You're going to eventually tear that old house down.
It's not on my property, sir.
It's not on your property?
No, that is on this Elsie's property.
On my property, okay. So that's going to sit there where it is, property then, okay?
Yeah, that's not on my property.
I want to commend you on the fact that you are going to take the authority to go ahead and paint these things.
Yeah, I've already actually painted them dark forest green.
And I appreciate that, and I'm going to bring it up to the board at another time, perhaps in our conditional use. I, I'm not one that likes a whole lot of regulations, but I think with these containers, when they're put in the open spaces and they're given a conditional use permit, a lot of people need them. I like to have one myself. But the, most of them are a drab or bright yellow. They stand out like a sore thumb.
Yeah.
Northumberland has green fields, green trees, pine trees and oak trees. Uh, green's a good color to blend in. And I want to thank you for doing that. And, uh, I, I, personally, I see no problem with what you're doing and hope the best for you.
I thank you.
All right, any other board members have any questions or comments? All right, Ms. Tillman, thank you for now. We're going to open the public hearing and, uh...
Thank you very much.
We'll be back to you, sir. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing now. I have no one on the sign-up sheet that signed up to speak tonight. Would anyone like to speak on this issue? Anyone like to speak on this issue? All right, would anyone in the virtual world like to speak tonight? Anyone in the virtual world like to speak on this issue? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and the matters will follow the board. This motion is made in due consideration of the public health and safety, the general welfare of the community, of the community, public necessity, convenience, and exercise of good zoning practices, and in pursuit to divide his statutory authority. My motion is to approve this request by Mr. Tillman. And, uh, Mr. Morrison, would you read those conditions that we have on there and make sure they're okay with Mr. Tillman?
Yes, sir. The suggested conditions of approved are that all required permits and or licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies. This conditional use permit shall be limited to two 20-foot cargo containers. And the cargo containers shall be placed as shown on the site plan and shall be painted green to camouflage the appearance as stated in the application.
Is that all right with you, Mr. Tillman?
I have one, one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
In the future, I'd like to see the, the length of these containers be on there. You can get them 20-foot long or you can get them 40-foot long. And I'd like to see the length of the containers be on the application.
Okay.
Okay, one other thing.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson, did you have a comment? Okay. Okay. I just wanted... So you all right with anything? Okay. That's all I had.
All right.
I've got a question also.
All right, hold on, we got, let's get the motion here. I got a motion on the floor. Do I have a second to it?
I'll second it.
All right, now, I'll take comment.
Did we have any opposition at all in, on this project?
I received correspondence from Mrs. Jackson that should have been provided, um, and I called and talked to her, and, and we just reiterated that she had no opposition.
All right, any other comments?
Additional condition that the container must be well-maintained.
All right. I'll accept that as amendment. Ms. Tillman, that your, uh, containers must be well, must be well-maintained would be another condition.
In which he, he has made every effort to do that.
He has already done, he's making an effort to do that. Yeah, what other need painting, just go ahead and paint them, sir. All right. All right, any other comments? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those against. Mr. Tillman? Go ahead and do what you need to do, sir.
All right. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
At some appropriate point, whenever that might be, I'd like for this board to, uh, to go into this situation with containers and discuss some items in general.
That is on my mind also.
What was that now?
At some appropriate time, I would like for this board to sit down with the, all the conditional uses that they have on containers right now and go over them and make, possibly make some adjustments.
All right, next one is amendment, um, a amendment to the Northumberland County Code. Good to see you, ma'am.
An amendment to the Northumberland County Code, Chapter 132. New sections beginning with 132-81. Due dates for real estate, personal property taxes, machinery and tools, and merchants' capital, changing the due date from December 5th to November 5th annually, as permitted by the Code of Virginia, 58.1-39.16. An amendment to the Northumberland County Code, Chapter 92, Article 1, 92-2C. Due date for vehicle license, changing the due date from December 5th to November 5th annually, as permitted by the County Code of Virginia, 58.1-39.16.
All right. Any board members have any questions before I open the public hearing? No questions?
I, I think you had stated last time, this change would help you, uh, in what way now?
For us, it would help so that we could get the delinquent list into the state, so that we can collect, um, the state, um, refunds, we can get those.
All right, so your due date would be November the 5th. When would you be mailing the notices, eh?
We have to give them at least 30 days to pay, or we like to give them at least 30 days to pay. So it would be no later than October 5th.
All right, okay.
Well, will you get this information in the local papers, still, in the radio stations?
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board before I open the public hearing? All right. Give me a few minutes, open the public hearing, we'll get back to you, please. All right. Let's see, I don't have anybody on the sign-up sheet. Would anyone like to speak on this issue tonight? Anyone like to speak on the issue of changing the due date on your taxes? Anyone in the, yes, ma'am? Come on up, ma'am, please. Come on up and, and state your name and all for the record, please.
Sharon Bryson, Altown Road, Calio, Virginia. Could she explain more why it needs to be changed? I didn't quite understand why it would need to be changed to a month earlier.
Would you be so kind, Pam?
In the January meeting, we came up with three. One would be to benefit the county to get the revenue in sooner. The other was for the citizens to get it away from the holiday. And the third is for our office, we have to submit a delinquent list to the state by December 30th. And with the December 5th being the deadline, it doesn't give us much time to send out that second notice and get the, give the taxpayers 14 days to pay. We use a tool, it's debt set-off. Any state refunds, we can collect those if you don't have your taxes paid. So I think, look, last year was like $160,000 we got from that collection tool.
To do more with the, get money paid? Why does the state need to, uh, give us money?
If taxpayers are delinquent, then we can ask them for their state refunds checks.
Oh, okay.
It's just a collection tool that we use for the office.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir, come...
For the first year, could we possibly get them sent out at six weeks before they're due, just because of the change? Considering that you're going for a whole month difference in time? I feel like, just generally as the county, giving them, them the extra two weeks to have it due might be nice for the first year, considering that a lot of people sit there and save their money. money up to be able to pay that tax on that December 5th because it's been the same for as many years as it has. It's just a personal thought on the matter because I did read about it before I came in today. And I had talked to a couple other business owners. And like I said, the two extra weeks to have it sent out early might help in that case, too, in case people don't listen to the radio anymore or read the newspapers because that's coming down slimmer and slimmer every year.
Yeah.
That's all.
All right, that would be up to our treasurer, Pam King, to do that.
I noticed she had said 30 days.
Yeah.
But typically, we get our notices five to six weeks early anyhow. So we got a cushion built in. That's what they've done in the past, so. It won't be any later than 30 days, but normally y'all a couple weeks ahead. A couple, yeah.
Sooner than that.
Right.
All right. I know you'll do what you can to get it out. I know that. All right, anyone else like to speak? All right, would anyone in the virtual world like to speak on the tax date change? Anyone in the virtual world like to speak on the tax date change? No one? All right. I'm going to close... I'm going to close the public hearing and the matters before the board.
I make a motion that we move forward with the change.
All right. Got a motion to have second?
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion and a second. Do I have any other discussion?
One thing. How is this going to be advertised? It's county website, social media, newspaper. We going to hit it in all directions so hopefully it'll get out to everybody?
And also, sometime fly or something to all the organizations, civic organizations, churches, as many as you can hit, all right?
All right, any other comments? All right, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. Motion passes, Pam. Thank you, ma'am, for coming in tonight. All right, next is a revision to the Northumberland County zoning ordinance for boat houses. And that would be, Mr. McKenzie?
Yes, sir. Our revision to the Northumberland County zoning ordinance, Section 148-151, boat houses, add a definition for boat canopies and add exemptions to Items 5, 6, and 8 that do not apply to boat canopies in order to allow them in Northumberland County. In addition, add boat canopies as a use in the zoning usage table to make them a conditional use in A1 agriculture, C1 conservation, R2 residential waterfront, R3 residential restricted, R4 residential recreational, B1 business, and M1 industrial zoning districts. This is basically modifying the boat house ordinance so that boat canopies can be allowed. And I believe there's some images of boat canopies on the screen. I received no comments from citizens. One citizen called and asked about boat canopies and said that he thought they belonged on boats. And I explained to him, these are structures that are mounted to the boat lift with four marine pilings. So that was the only comment I had, no for or against. Planning Commission recommended for the board to pass it, to make these changes.
All right. Any comments from the board?
I got a question.
Hi, go ahead.
Go ahead, sir, go ahead.
How are you getting this information out to the public?
Well, we advertised for two weeks for the Planning Commission public hearing in the local newspapers and classified ad, in the classified ad section, public notice section. And then we also, after the planning commission met, we advertised for two weeks before this meeting in the Northumberland Echo and Rappahannock Record.
You don't put anything about it on the radio stations or anything?
No, sir.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, any other comments?
Yes, you stated, put the canopy to existing boat lift pilings. What if you don't have a boat lift? Maybe what if you just got pilings?
Well, the definition for boat house canopy private states, "A metal frame structure with a fabric canopy over a tidal waterway attached to pilings that shelters a boat by complete or partial enclosure." So all you need is the pilings. It doesn't have to have a boat lift underneath it.
I'm good with that.
But the pilings need to be permitted.
Yes.
You have to buy VMRC.
That's right.
Of course. And the reason the Planning Commission wanted to make it conditional use is that the canopies are likely, over the years, to fade. And if there's a conditional use, then the board does have some action to keep these so they're not torn and looking faded and all the rest of that stuff. As opposed to allowing it by right.
Is cost the main reason somebody would go with one of these canopies versus the wood-framed boat house?
That's what we've heard, yeah.
And our neighboring counties are doing what? I know in Essex County on the Rappahannock River, they're everywhere.
Not in Lancaster County.
Only not in Lancaster.
Not in... I know Lancaster's one county you cannot put them up.
Yeah, they don't allow boat houses either.
All right, any other questions, comments from the board? If not, I'll open the public hearing. I have no one on the sign up sheet. Anyone like to speak tonight on this issue of the boat canopies? Anyone like to speak on this issue? All right, would anyone in the virtual world like to speak on this issue? Anyone in the virtual world like to speak on the issue of the boat canopies? Nobody? All right, I'll close the public hearing, the matters before the board. It was pleasure to board.
I make a motion that we go ahead and pass it with the restrictions that we have. We're protected, citizens are protected both now and in the future. If these things were to become disarrayed by storm damage or whatever, the board will have the authority to go in and see that they're removed if they're not properly maintained and kept up. And I think it's a good thing.
Okay.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if you could also read the language associated with that.
Read that language, too, Junior.
Okay. "This motion is made in due consideration of the public health and safety, the general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience, and in the exercise of good zoning practices in pursuit of the body's statutory authority."
All right. Got a motion and a second. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, motion passes. Next item is tabled, it was tabled from our February 20th board meeting and a special meeting. It's a amendment to the fiscal year budget. Mr. Tadlock?
Yes, sir. This was actually, we held the public hearing on this matter February 8th meeting. And we had further discussion on it at a later meeting. But the board had asked for additional information on the breakout of where the funds were coming from. And in Board Docs is a document that provides that outline as far as general fund, whether those funds were reimbursed, whether they were from the compensation board, whether it was payment like regarding the school games that the deputies provide services to. That information is in there. And then, of course, transfers from one category to the other. And specifically, those, as far as the general fund, as far as this particular budget amendment, the general fund had 15.48%. The reimbursements were 2.61%. Grants were 56.91%. Comp board was 7.04%. School reimbursements were 0.35% for the games. Transfers included 17.62%.
All right. Any questions, comments from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
The 2% for the salary increases was already built in the budget. You had already built it in the budget, correct?
The 2% that was provided in December was not built into the budget.
Okay.
So that was additional cost that the board had approved at the November meeting, I believe. So that's why we're asking for the supplemental appropriation. Well, you did the supplemental appropriation, we just need to do the budget amendment. So it's already been approved, it's just going through the next step with the budget But part of that was offset with the compensation board.
And I think the question in regards to the $273,000 for the school, that was instruction, that was a grant as well, which you already have here on this, under the grant category.
All right, any other comments, questions? If not, it was pleasure to board.
I'm sure that will approve.
I got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? There you go, Mr. Tadlock.
Thank you.
All right. This concludes all of our public hearings tonight. Only thing we have left on our agenda is to convene in a closed meeting. Tadlock, soon as you get ready, I will take the proper language for that.
All right, I need a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.23711a88, for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Invited to attend the closed meeting is necessary or the county administrator, county attorney, assistant county administrator, building official, and zoning official, as they are deemed necessary and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia for you, Section 2.23712F.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are in closed meeting.
I need a motion that the Northumberland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were hard discussed or considered during the closed meeting.
Motion, Junior?
Make a motion.
Give me somebody.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All right, roll call vote. Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Tanning votes aye. All right, we're back in the open meeting now. Your question?
Just for curiosity, could you do a comparison of some of the local counties on the percentage the school budget is for that county compared to what we do? I'm just curious, I mean, it's...
I've already passed yes, no doubt.
Sure, we'll look into that.
Anything else?
I have nothing else, no.
Have you got anything else? So you don't need any action from us, my closed meeting?
Not from closed...
No, we don't need any action on that.
No, sir.
You have nothing else? Yes, a motion to carry over if we're ready to carry over?
Unless the board wants to set up any work sessions for...
Yeah, work sessions, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off on that.
No, no, that's up to the board, however you wish to proceed.
Yeah. I think we should set up some work sessions while I won't schedule anything else in it. You know, at least one.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Thank you all very much.
Have a good evening.
Have a safe one back.
Dr. I know you were looking at the numbers that the school presented to you for the second time. Are those numbers correct? I guess are they correct to where John Q. Public goes in and starts looking at these numbers, they're not going to find any mistakes?
Man, if he do that, Jim, it...
The numbers that we have now are balanced, so the revenue and expenditures are balanced.
So it's...
So the numbers that we had previously did not. And that's what we had asked for them to provide us with correct.
Okay.
To have both sides balanced. You do have a draft notice in your documents, in Board Docs, and that's just for your information if that's something that the board wants to have a work session, discuss those numbers a little bit further, ask questions of the school division, or if you feel comfortable in moving forward. I've spent some time on it, Drew has spent some time on it, trying to tie those numbers back for the fiscal year '24 numbers. And we're able to tie those back.
Can you, Richmond County and Lancaster, those two counties, can you compare our budget with theirs by next meeting? They're similar.
Our budget or the school budget?
School budget.
School budget.
I'm saying those two counties, because they're, they count on our level. Westmoreland's ahead of us as far as population and everything. But Vice Accountant in Richmond County would be a good comparison. I think we need to set up a meeting, at least one meeting, to start working on the budgets.
When do you want to do it?
I'd like for us to think of a meeting where I won't schedule anything else on that day. What do you think, Mr.? Mr. Tadlock?
I know April 4th, I believe it is, we have the smart...
April 4th?
We have that set up aside for the smart meter discussion.
Oh, boy.
With the menu.
Man, I tell you what. I got a foot doctor. I gotta take care of my feet on the 4th. What time?
I believe we set that one up for 6:00.
6 o'clock. 6 o'clock, I think it was.
6:00 P.M.
6:00.
A foot doctor.
They all, yeah, man. Every three months, I gotta take care of those feet.
All you need to do is go to the vet's office. They take care of that for you quick.
No, that's all right. 6:00 P.M. is good.
6:00 P.M. is what it is.
Okay, yeah. That's good.
It's April 4th. That's, that's for the smart meters.
Yes. While everybody's looking at the calendars, I'm gonna ask one more question, and I, I promise I'll try and be quiet. It's, it's presented by Mr. Peaker tonight in regards to the numbers being redone for the budget process. And as far as the numbers being, have been redone for the budget, it's already closed out. I mean, how, if it, if it's, if it was done, how can that be done? And what, what impact is that gonna have on the audit that we got tonight? Because if the numbers have been changed now...
That makes the old audit even worse.
Yes.
And does that, that have any reflect on what he's saying now, that they, that they match? That now they're, they sent them back, and now they're sent them back to us, and now they match?
And that's why I'm concerned about the numbers. Because if you've, if you've gone back and you changed your numbers for a year that's already closed out...
And been audited.
And been audited, that's, this is no good then. Unless this is the only thing that we're gonna accept. Okay? So, if this is what we're gonna accept, then we need to tell them, no, you need to stick with your numbers on your budget that you closed out, and we don't change them. How, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there. I don't want to get in this, in a...
It's gotta be another explanation for the difference.
Yes.
That, that doesn't cut the difference.
And I want to make sure that the audit is right, that this is right.
I'm most of Rob Peter to pay Paul.
Right. And that, it's kind of, you know, if, if that's the situation, then, then why? And, and how can you do that? I'm, I'm just thinking it's gonna throw, throw this off. And when that happens, it's, it's gonna cause more concern and more questions.
Maybe somebody's hoping you're not thinking. I mean, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be cynical about it, but I want, I want to get to the facts. I want to get to the truth.
Yeah. And I want to, want this stuff to get fixed. I'll promise I'll be quiet.
No, you keep on.
Keep going, man.
No, I mean, I just...
That's how we improve.
You keep on. I, I agree with you.
Absolutely.
We, I'm wanting answers.
I think you got a whole board here that wants answers.
Right. Yeah, I agree with you on that, too. And we need the answers. We need to know exactly what's going on, so we can put an end to all this mess.
And that...
Right or wrong.
And to me, that help, that's, that's, that's gonna hinder us trying to get a budget approved on time, early. That's, it's, it's gonna throw a wrench into the process. The numbers have changed.
It's a hell of a question. Why did they not match, and now they do?
Why did they go back and change the numbers for the budgets that are already closed out? You know, I, I don't know the method to the madness, but I'm concerned because it's gonna cause us problems.
If you change the numbers, something must be wrong. That's the first thing you're gonna think. Why go back and change numbers after they've all been approved? If they were right then, why aren't they right now?
I guess, you know...
And if you found something going through it, why didn't you say something and say, "This is why we got to change the numbers to get it to come out"? Then you know what's going on. And then, I guess you'd have to change something else, wouldn't you, Larry? You wouldn't be able to use the, use that, that existing budget then. You'd have to...
Yeah.
How would you take care of that?
Yeah, I, I think it's, without knowing what numbers they were looking at and being specifically involved with that, I can't answer that.
If they told you what they, what they did, how would you take care with the, take care of the different numbers for the budget? If the budget was lower or higher?
And we still have the issue with the expenditures, or the school board did not reconcile to the total school fund expenditures, just by the county church. We, we've had that ongoing problem for years. And we still got the issue with the documentation missing from some expenditures, and some of them were already paid twice, and overpayments. And, I mean...
Mr. Chairman, can we comment here tonight on what we were told last night about the sick leave?
Yeah. Public hearing.
Chip, are you aware?
About the what? I didn't hear what you said.
About the last, correct me if I'm wrong there, because I want to get this exactly right.
I think you'll get it right.
We were told last night unofficially that at the last school board meeting, they elected to start paying teachers when they retire for their sick leave that they built up, which in fact could amount to, a teacher who served for 25 years and didn't use her sick leave much at all, could amount in the amount of over $60,000. I don't know if you've been aware of that, or if you'd heard that?
First I've heard of it.
That came out of the...
Joint?
Out of the school board meeting.
Yes.
They had. So, it's in their school board meeting. They, it was videoed and recorded as far as voice and audio. It's, and they never asked, I don't mean to cut you off, Junior.
No, go ahead.
I mean, cut you off. I'm sorry. But they never asked how many teachers, how much it was gonna cost. They just blank stamped it, a five to zero vote.
And it was, it was...
They voted, they didn't just, just discuss it. They voted to do that.
They voted on it.
They just voted to do it, without any discussion on it.
And, and it was, it was, the motion was made for the teachers, but when it actually came up for a vote, it was said to be employees.
Employees, that's the next thing.
So, does that go school bus drivers, cafeteria people?
Janitors, everybody.
Janitors.
Everybody. That changed everything completely. And Junior's right. He's exactly right. And but they never asked how many people, or employees, or schoolteachers, or whatever it was, and what did a dollar amount could be. They just rubber stamped it right that minute.
And I'm not sure, suppose you have a schoolteacher who serves 10, 12 years and leaves North umberland County in good standing and has built up a reasonable amount of sick leave. Is, is that person gonna be paid for a sick leave altogether? Or is it just for retired people?
I think it was for retirees.
Just for retired people?
Just for retirees?
Just for retirees. That's, that's was my take.
How many years ago?
Sir?
How many years?
Doesn't go back.
You want yours?
Yes. I know they miss it a lot.
Get, get you your 60 grand.
That's 60 grand, Jim, Jim.
I didn't miss it a lot.
Now, now where's that money coming from?
Well...
You know where the money's coming from.
I don't know we're having a discussion on this, but I, I think if we're concerned about it, I think it needs to be put into a question and forwarded to...
Yeah, it does. It needs to be put into a question.
And I think that's the best way to do it. Let's get, let's get Derek to take on it.
Yeah. I, I'd like the facts to make sure that that's what happened. But people said, well, they came right at the...
Well, it's, it's in the, it's in the minutes and it's on video.
It's in the minutes, right on the school board.
Yes.
So, I don't know.
So, there was, there was very little discussion?
No discussion, no discussion, is, is the way we were told.
Yeah, I, I want to hear that.
I don't think they're gonna grandfather you, Jim.
Wishful thinking.
Yep.
At any rate, to Jim's recommendation, I think that's good if we could actually see the document.
Yeah, I'd love to see it all.
How can we live with that?
And I'd love to have their, their answer to why and what brought it up.
They, they want to get in cahoots with the teachers. They want their teachers on their side. This thing's getting ready to blow. Cut times for cuts. They want the teachers on their side. They get the teachers on their side. That's halfway to the public opinion. Everybody's entitled to opinion. That's, that's just...
Well, next meeting on the 4th, we ought to have some kind of information on that. Sooner the better.
All right. I guess one of our questions we haven't answered yet is, do we want to have any work sessions?
Can we, um...
Yes.
For what? Can we see what information we get between now and the 4th? And let's take the 4th and set some work session dates.
Do it either way you want it.
That ought to be...
Yeah, yeah. That's sound good.
It's not so far off, anyway.
That way, we can get our calendars and just do what we need to do.
Yeah, we need to.
You all right with that?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Mr. Long, he's gotta get his feet worked on. We'll put him down for foot operation.
He just gonna right on go down here to the animal clinic? They could fix him right up?
Oh, Jim, what's wrong with your feet? All you need is a hammer across your feet.
Hey, look, I don't want anything to happen to him.
Better maintenance.
Huh?
Better maintenance.
Hey, look.
You see that?
Those shoes now?
Yes, sir.
Man, the best shoes ever had. You know how much shoe, shoe cleaning and tapahana? Caught them on sale.
What kind of order, Jim?
$149.
What kind of order, Jim?
D U N H A N, H A M, Dunham.
Tell me something that walk good. You gotta have something good on your feet.
Can I just get some clarification? Between now and the, the 4th, are, are you all gonna be submitting additional questions to the School Division to be asked?
Yes.
If y'all are gonna be emailing me those questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I just wanted to make sure.
Who we want to...
You sending a question on that thing, or is Junior sending, or who's sending?
It don't make any difference.
Oh, we're all gonna send a question on that?
It's fine.
What's that, Jim?
They, they get a clarification on the pay for the sick leave for the retired teachers.
I would really like to have a good answer to that one.
When did that, when was that gonna go into effect?
They got one retiring now, and I think that's what...
I don't know. I don't know when.
No, I think evidently they got a teacher that's, that's retiring this year. And I think she will be the first one to get it. From what information that I've got. But that's, that's why I want to hear from the school board also.
I didn't think you were aware of it. That's why I wanted to bring it up. We just heard about it last night.
Is that what you need?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Drew, you got any comments? Is that it?
Morgan says she's ready to go home.
All right. Motion to carry over till April the 4th at 6:00 P.M.
I'll make the motion.
I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. If we got anybody in the virtual world, thank you for coming, too.